Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for joining the Philadelphia Women. As you know, our commission was founded in 2015 with a ballot initiative. And I'm really happy to say that one of our council members who was a guest tonight had a lot to do with the legislation that created our commission. And that would be Councilmember Gilmore Richardson. So I'd like to introduce our moderator for this evening, who happens to be Vanessa Fields, who is the Chair of the Philadelphia Commission for Women, and who is also the President of the Philadelphia Chapter of NOW. And I tell people all the time, without Vanessa, I would be like a penny waiting for change. That is how her leadership and her partnership in this commission has meant so very much to me. Vanessa was the previous Vice President for the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees of District Council Forty Seven. She was responsible for the PAC Fund Legislative and Political Activities for the Union in all of their community outreach activities. After her retirement in 2016, as a social worker with the Department of Human Services, Vanessa became a Regional Director for the Hillary Clinton Campaign. She serves as a Democratic Committee Person for the Fifty Second Ward, Tenth Division. She is a member of the Coalition of Labor Union Women, where she serves on its Executive Board. She is a member of the Coalition of Black Trade Unionists. She's a member of the A. Philip Randolph Institute, where she serves as the Chairperson of its Community Committee. And she is the member of the Open Wards, where she serves on its Steering Committee. Vanessa is also a very proud member of the Lincoln University Alumni Association. She is, has been the recipient of the Karen Silkwood Award from Filiposh for her work preventing tuberculosis in the workplace. And she is a recipient of the Women of Moxie Award, Minds of Men Community Outreach Award, and recipient of the Martin Luther King Labor Award. Please welcome Vanessa Fields, our moderator for this evening.
So, okay. Thank you so much, Jovita, for that introduction.
The pleasure was all mine. You know that.
So, tonight, thank you. Nah, I'll pay you later for the intro. Um, so tonight, we have the pleasure of speaking with four dynamic women who currently sit on City Council of Philadelphia. So I'm going to introduce you to each of them, give you a short bio of them. Our first panelist is Councilmember Sherrell L. Parker. She proudly serves the Ninth Council District, which stretches through Northwest and Northeast communities. She was raised by her grandparents. Sherrell's mission to bridge the gap between the haves and the have-nots continues to be her driving force for change. She has dedicated her life for the passages of public policies that enhance the quality of life for the working class, senior citizens, women and children, while creating job creation and sustainability, economic development, and equitable public school system, and consumer protection laws. She is a graduate of both the University of Pennsylvania and my alma mater, Lincoln University. She's a mom. She resides in Mount Airy. And she enjoys reading, traveling, cooking, and spending time with friends. Welcome, Councilperson Parker. Our next council member, Cindy Bass, is a tireless fighter for quality of life issues affecting Philadelphians. Since taking office in 2012, she has fought against blight and trash in our neighborhoods. In her first term, Bass passed legislation to regulate outdoor clothing donation bins, which often attract litter and dumping. Councilmember Bass is a lifelong Philadelphian, having grown up in North Philly. That's why I grew up also. She has a bachelor's degree from Temple, and she resides currently in East Mount Airy and is the proud mother of a daughter. Welcome, Councilwoman Cindy Bass. Next, Kendra Brooks is the first Working Families Party member elected to the Philadelphia City Council. Kendra has deep roots, working across movement-building organizations throughout Philadelphia, where her focus has been on restorative justice practices in schools and communities, fighting school privatization efforts, gun violence, and advocating for affordable housing. She received her undergraduate degree from Temple and went on to receive a Master's in Business Administration from Eastern University. Kendra resides in Nice Town with her four children. And I believe congratulations are in order because Kendra is a newlywed also. So, welcome, Councilwoman Brooks. And last but not least, Catherine Gilmore Richardson is serving her first term as Councilperson at large for Philly. Gilmore Richardson's demonstrated track record of service and leadership helped her become the youngest woman ever elected citywide and the youngest African-American woman ever elected to Philadelphia City Council. And this was in November 2019. Her focus has been on progressive policies affecting and advocating for women, children, people of color, and more. Welcome, Councilperson Gilmore Richardson. So I would just want to thank you four ladies again for agreeing to participate in this discussion. So I'm gonna start with my first question, which is, what made you want to run for public office? And I'm gonna start with Catherine.
Well, greetings and good evening to each and every one of you. Thank you so much to the Philadelphia Commission for Women for this wonderful opportunity to share with women and other Philadelphians and those listening from all over the world on this International Women's Day. As Jovita stated at the top of the presentation, this moment is very full circle for me because as a legislative aide in City Council, working under my mentor, a former councilmember Blondell Reynolds Brown, I had the opportunity to work on the charter change to create a permanent commission for women in city government. So it's just so wonderful to be here with you for International Women's Day of 2022. But what made me want to run for office was really looking at and thinking about where we were as a city at that time, and that was back in 2019. And really, for me, I want to, you know, improve the quality of life of those that we serve all across the entire city of Philadelphia. And when I looked at where we were, what I saw was a city of inequity. I saw a city where your zip code determined your life expectancy. And for me, that was just not okay. And so in everything that I do, I seek to improve the quality of life of those that we serve. And that was the impetus for me wanting to run for office. And I'll say this, I remember the day that my mentor announced that she would not seek a sixth term in City Council. And I recall my phone ringing off the hook and people said, Kathy, you have to run. And so just to hear that from the community, that folks in the community wanted me to work on their behalf, that was also a part of the reason that I decided to run for Philadelphia City Council at large.
Thank you for that answer.
Good question.
Um, the next person, Kendra, did you answer that for us?
Yes, I hope my background, something happened up the street, so I have like a helicopter over the house.
Oh, wow.
It's dying down now. So, yeah, thank you so much, Jovita and Mama Fields over there. I really appreciate being a part of this. I thought I decided to run, you know, I have been doing advocacy and activism for like twenty-plus years. And I've been fighting for communities from the outside, you know? And I said, why not take a chance and do the same fighting from the inside out and kind of build partnerships and coalitions, you know, on both sides of government? So I, I just thought, if not me, then who? Who has a better understanding of community? Why not take a chance at this third-party seat? Why does it have to be a Republican? So I had a lot of questions that I asked myself before I said yes. And the final one was, if not who? If not me, then whom? So, you know, to me, it was just continue to fight for my community just in a different way.
Yeah, yeah. Great answer. Councilwoman Bass, you're next.
Well, good evening, Vanessa. It's always a pleasure to see you from my good friend from our old days of serving on the NOW board. I don't want to date us because it wasn't that long ago. But it's always a pleasure to be with you and Jovita as well and really all of my colleagues and the folks who are here tonight. And I just, you know, thank you for this opportunity. You know, I, I can't exactly pinpoint exactly when I decided to run, but I can tell you that there's always been a spirit of activism, as you mentioned in my bio. You know, I'm born and raised in North Philadelphia, and I never was happy with the way my neighborhood looked. And I just felt like we should have more. We deserve more. We, you know, pay taxes just like everybody else. And so why wasn't it that the community that I was born and raised in looked the way it did? Didn't feel safe, didn't feel it had the same amount of amenities that other neighborhoods that we traveled to had? And so at a young age, my mother was a single mom. It was just me, my sister, and her. You know, she encouraged us to be engaged, to be a volunteer, to don't just sit around and talk about what you don't like, but to get engaged if there's something that you don't like. And so I volunteered for different things, you know, throughout my life. I was a candy striper when I was young and a Girl Scout and, you know, everything in between, just really wanting to be active and to do things, to make things better. And so as I continued in this role in adult life, I encountered different elected officials, then State Senator Allison Schwartz, and then Congressman Shaka Fatah, both of whom reached out and asked me to join their team and to bring some of the advocacy that they saw me having in the neighborhoods, to bring that into their offices and give, you know, working in public office a try. And it just really sort of blossomed from, from those very humble beginnings. But, you know, I always tell folks when they want to make a change in their neighborhood, I say, well, are you involved in your PDAC with the police? Are you involved with your Advisory Council, with the Parks and Recreation, your neighborhood playground? Are you advising the Library Advocacy Board? Are you invited, involved in your civic association? Are you involved in all of these things, some of these things, or none of these things? And so we really have to be the change that we want to see. As Kendra, my colleague, Councilwoman Brooks, mentioned earlier, you know, we have to be the change that we want to see. And if not us, then who? And that's for all of us. So I thank you for that question.
Thank you. Thank you for that answer. Councilwoman Parker, you're next.
Thank you so very much to each of you, again, Jovita and to Vanessa, all of the commission members, my colleagues who are here, and everyone who is present. It's an honor and a privilege to be here with you this evening. And I was just thinking, as I was listening to my colleagues, I did not want to run for election to the Pennsylvania General Assembly. I was not interested in going to Harrisburg. I had been working as an intern in the office of my mother mentor, who I was introduced to by the late Councilwoman Augusta Clark Marion Tasco, actively engaged in the West Oakland community that I was reared in, where I was raised by my grandparents, my grandmother, domestic worker, my grandfather, a disabled Navy veteran. And my mother was a single teenage mother. And they did the best they could with whatever they had when they raised me. But I learned at a very early age that there was a different treatment received by what I call the haves and the have-nots. Because I lost my mother early, my grandmother took care of me and had to get public assistance to take care of me. So we had to go to a place called the Three Two Center, which is where my grandmother would pick up her food stamps and the ninety-eight dollars in cash that she would get every two weeks to take care of her grandchild. And I remember how the spirit of my grandmother changed after she got the food stamps. When she went to the window, I watched how people looked at her. I watched how they treated her. And I knew that she did not like that interaction. And I said, why? These people have jobs because my grandmother needs help because she's doing the service by taking care of her grandchild. And so that was one. The next thing was the nineteen eighties. Crack cocaine ravaged the West Oakland community that I was reared in. And believe me when I tell you, no one was talking about building a safe smokehouse. People were being impacted. Families were torn apart. And I wanted to know who was going to clean up my neighborhood, stop drugs from taking over my neighborhood, and who was going to help rebuild the families that were being destroyed in every way imaginable because of this? And when I went to a community meeting, they did Councilwoman Bass exactly what you said. I was only sixteen, and I was standing up, challenging people who were elected to vote, who were elected to represent us. And I wasn't even old enough to vote, but they said to me, what are you gonna do? And I thought, well, that was so unfair. I can't even vote for you. But it communicated to me very early on that it would not be satisfactory for Sherrell Parker to like be an expert AOP and articulate of the problem. I had to roll up my sleeves and be a part of the solution. So I had started doing that from the tender age of seventeen. So when I ran for public office in 2005, it wasn't the first time people in my community knew me because I was Sherrell Cleaning Graffiti, West Oakland Neighbors Against Drugs, the Oakland Wildcats. I was a part of the fabric of my community. And being with a group of people in a community that you care so much about and feeling empowered, like I felt when people challenged me to get off the sidelines and roll up my sleeves to do the hard work, it continues to motivate and inspire me to today.
I had to unmute myself, and I got these old fancy fingernails. They're cute, but not practical. So, thank you, ladies, for that answer. So basically, what you all are saying is that you are already involved in your community. You all made the decision. I am the change that I'm looking for, even before the saying came out. So with that in mind, we all know that being in public office is not for the faint of heart. So what skills, life experiences, qualities do you feel make you uniquely qualified to hold public office? And we're gonna start with Kendra this, this time.
I knew you were gonna start with me. I think for me, I have always been very like passionate, committed, and always had a lot to say. But I also have very thick skin. And I think those are some of the skills that I bring with me into the office. But also, like, my background is being a practitioner of restorative practices, traveling around the country, showing people how to work together and how together we can make a difference. We don't always have to agree. We have to get to a win. And I think those are skills that I learned later in life as I taught restorative practices, primarily around families and community and sometimes around race relations across the country, kind of prepared me for, you know, elected office. I didn't know at the time those were the skills that I was gaining or what they were gonna be used for. However, I do feel that all of those things I kind of gathered over the years have brought me to this place.
Great answer. Okay, um, Councilwoman Bass, you're next.
Thank you. So I, I agree with Councilwoman Brooks. I think that a lot of her attributes are attributes that I think are absolutely necessary, particularly a thick skin. You know, people really take shots at you, and you have to be able to keep it moving, not take it personally. And this is a job, I always say, this is a job. You can only do this job if you love it. Because it's a job that, there's days when, you know, it takes you to the highest of highs and the lowest of lows. And you have to be able to get back up, get back out there, and you have to be able to fight for your people. I'm here, you know, the attributes that I bring to the table is, the biggest one is that I just really love my people. I want us to do better. I want us to have more. I think that we can do more and have better in our communities, and that's just what drives me every day. I think some of the other attributes to be an elected official is you have to have patience. And then you also have to, you know, as, you know, the older folks say, you got two eyes and one mouth for a reason. You know, be quiet and listen. You have to, you know, and two ears, you have to listen to what people are saying to you. And so those are the kind of things that really go a long way. Because sometimes when people are angry and they come at you wrong, some of what you're hearing is just frustration. And I want to be heard, and I want, I want you to feel what I'm feeling. And although we might not exactly feel it, we have enough of a sense of understanding of the problems that exist to know to listen, to just take it in. Sometimes people really just want to be heard. So I would say listening, paying attention, hearing what folks have to say, patience, you know, strong backbone and thick skin is what's required to be in a job description.
Yes, indeed. Councilwoman Parker, you're next.
Listen, I would, I would just say, I think my humble beginnings. I, I don't like it when people begin to engage in I-know-what's-best-for-you's-people policymaking. There is nothing more frustrating for me than someone who hasn't walked in the shoes of somebody, for example, who's living in poverty. But instead of asking the folks who are closest to the pain, what do they think the potential solutions are? They begin to proffer solutions for people. So I will argue to you that my compassion, my empathy, and my sense of urgency about outcomes and results. I am always weary of rhetoric and firmly believe, because my grandmother like drilled this in me, I don't care if you're not rich, you don't have as much money as they do. But if you work hard, if you get a good education, you can do anything you want and be anything you want. So that sense of urgency comes from, if we will employ our people with access to the opportunity, not handouts, just give them access to the opportunity to be self-sufficient, we will see, you know, a safer, a cleaner city with more economic opportunity for all when we give people the ability to take care of themselves. I would also say being an active listener, that's the greatest compliment that I have ever received. I was, I was told by a friend of mine, Sherrell, you are an active listener. And, and don't laugh, I Googled it afterwards. Because I didn't, I mean, that's like the sociology term. Maybe Kendra, you and, you know, y'all who worked in human services, you probably knew what that was. I didn't know what that was. But what she said to me is that when you see something wrong and when you listen to people share with you the problems that they are facing or in the community, she said, you become, you know, like OCD-driven to fix it, the outcome. I want people to see it, touch it, taste it, and feel it because that's the only way we make them believe.
Absolutely, absolutely. Catherine, I keep calling everybody by their first names. No disrespect. My fellow committee woman, because we both are committee women in the Fifty Second Ward, that's right. All right, so the question is for you now.
Sure. Well, first, I have to agree with all of my colleagues on the call. Those attributes are very important. But for me, I would say my lived experience. I was born and raised here in the city of Philadelphia. I was born to a teenage South Philly girl who gave me up for adoption at birth to my parents, who raised me in the Winfield section of Philadelphia. So I had that lived experience, being born and raised here. But also from a attribute, or I'd say skills perspective, a few things that I didn't hear is you have to be strategic. You must be strategic in this work. You have to be methodical. Patience is another one because you can have an idea, and it may take you a while to get to the finish line. You must be a problem solver. That, we have a number of problems and challenges, which I believe bring opportunities for us to make a difference for the people that we serve. And another one that I learned from my mentor Blondell Reynolds Brown, from her mom, Miss Sadie, she used to always say, Blondell is like the Energizer Bunny. And now I get it, because when you're in this role, you have to be like the Energizer Bunny. It is a twenty-four-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week job. You must have time management skills, down pat, to a science. Particularly, you know, I have to say this on this International Women's Day, when you're a working mother and you're working very, very hard to not only serve the people of this city, but also be a good wife and a mother to our young people. I have my kids at the table right now, and they're doing their homework, including my niece. And so you have to have time management skills as well to be able to do this work effectively. But for me, I'll say that you also have to be community-centered, and I know all of my colleagues stated that. And also, I keep God first in everything that I do. I don't do anything without putting God first in my life, over my day, and all the work that I'm seeking to undertake.
Yes. Thank you so much for that answer. So I think what I heard consistently was that you have to be an active listener. You have to understand that you gotta talk to the people who are going through whatever to help you with solving that. And you, and see, with women, we have to constantly, you know, throw the balls in the air and make sure none of them fall, which makes it so difficult for women. Because men, they don't have to deal with that. I remember as, you know, when I first became a leader in the labor movement, and I would be the only woman in the room. And I remember men would say, oh, I'm gonna get home. My wife is cooking dinner. I was like, well, I ain't got no wife. I gotta go home and cook dinner for my grandkids. So it is difficult. So, which goes into my next question. I was reading the Sunday Inquirer, and there was an article this past Sunday that Whitmore Plot Highlights Risk Facing Women in Political Office. The article went on to state that several studies have shown the disparity between how men and women are treated. They found female Democrats receive ten times more abusive comments on Facebook than their male peers, while Republican women also receive twice as many as their male counterparts. So for a woman to take on the decision that, hey, I'm going to be the change. I'm not looking for anyone else. But what we also have to deal with is, mm-mm, you, this is not your lane. This is not your lane. So what would you say has been your biggest challenge as a woman running and holding public office? So I'm gonna start with Councilperson Bass first.
Well, thank you. That's an excellent question. And it really, as you were speaking, it took me back to, you know, some of the challenges as a woman in this business. And well, the first thing I want to say is, you said as a Democratic woman, you, you know, the, the number of negative comments are, you know, particularly high. But what you did say is, which needs to be examined, let's parse that down even further. As Democratic black women, the amount of commentary, attacks, you know, the personalization of it. I, you know, listen, I even ran in 2019, and I had a big poster up on Lincoln Drive that someone defaced. And I never had that happen before. And, you know, I said, I said to the person, I said, leave it up there. It's good for me. Like, people, people, people feel some kind of way because it really did charge up folks. Like, no, we're not gonna take that. That's unacceptable. We don't do that. You know, we support our African-American women elected officials. And so, you know, it becomes quite a challenge to deal with. One of the things I'll never forget that, you know, this incident that occurred, and I was at a city committee Democratic fundraising dinner. And I was standing there talking to State Senator Sharif Streep, and we both laugh about this story now. And I was standing there talking to State Senator Sharif Street, and we both laugh about this story now. And someone came over, very well-known, older gentleman, came over and approached us and started talking. And he said, you know, Cindy, you're the, something like, you're the nicest, sweetest, you know, member, elected official. And Sharif, you're the smartest elected official. I said, well, why can't I be the smartest one and he be the sweetest one? Why I got to be sweet and he get to be smart, you know, because I'm smart too, okay? And so that's, that's the, you know, even, even unintended, I don't, I really don't think, because he's a different generation. I don't think that it was an intentional way of coming at me. But nonetheless, as Black women in this business, the, the hits are particularly hard. And you have to be able to manage that. You have to be able to manage that stress, the stress of raising your family. You know, when I started in city council, my daughter, she's 12 now, when I started, she was two years old. And, you know, I was talking to someone and I said, you know, I, I, I'm the only person in my group that has a young child at home. And somebody said, well, you know, oh, David O has young children. And it's like you said, Vanessa, well, he's got a stay-at-home wife, so that's a little bit different. You know, like, I'm, I'm the stay-at-home wife and I'm also the city councilperson. So there's a lot to deal with, but, you know, I think if you've got the right mindset, you keep your mind right, you keep your mind clear, you can, we, we can accomplish all things.
Thank you. Thank you for that answer. And you're right, Black women deal with it more so. Because we do the fact that the intersectionality of race and gender. So, you know, it's also, you know, the racism part where, well, you know, Black folk aren't supposed to do this. And not only are you Black, but you're a woman trying to do it? It, it is. It is a double whammy, as they would say. Sherrell, you have the question next. Councilperson Parker?
So I'm sorry, I was having challenges with sound, so you all were going in and out. I would, I would argue, for me, it's been not allowing anyone to put me in a box. When I went to Harrisburg, I can't remember getting there, getting my office assignments, and then waiting on my committee assignments. And they ask you what you're interested in. And before I could give my answer, they immediately said, well, the Human Services Committee, we know that you'll be interested in that. We know you'll be interested in the Health Committee. And I said, well, retirement security is extremely important to me. So I'm interested in being on the Finance Committee. Appropriations of how we're going to spend this $34 billion state budget and every committee and the budget has to be approved through the Appropriations Committee. I want to make sure that I'm a part of that discussion, because the politics is simply a tool for me that I use to advocate for scarce resources to take back home to my neighborhood. And it was almost as if, you know, well, who in the world do you, to think that you supposed to, you know, have a seat on the Appropriations Committee and the Finance Committee and let alone be a part of the retirement security conversation, municipal and/or state pensions? And so, and very early when I got there, I learned that a bullhorn and thinking that you were going to, because I watched other people shout down folks to make them agree with whatever your perspective was, that wouldn't, that wouldn't help me. That wasn't a tool that I could use. I had to say, Sherrell, let your work speak for itself. And, and, and not try to erase any kind of racism, sexism, classism, colorism, or any of the other isms that plague our society to define who you are. Earn the respect of the people that you work with by your work. And I will argue to you, I tell women, especially little girls today, you know, don't let anybody throw shade on your shine. We, we, we get it now. I love Councilwoman Bass's example about, oh yeah, you're sweet and you're nice, but yeah, you know, you know, you're smart. And we get that quite frequently. And, and don't forget the, oh, you look so nice today. And then, and then, and then after a while, after a while, I said, oh, Sherrell, I know what to do now. I said, oh, nice tie. You picked out that color and you, and, and just touched the tie. And all of a sudden, it was, you know, it's different when you invade, when you go into somebody else's face or you touch their arm. They may not be accustomed to that. But because we, and listen, the guys, they treated me very well when I was in, in Harrisburg. But I would argue to you that the best way that I've always felt like I could navigate and get around any of those isms was by making my work speak for itself. And, and, and people then become to respect you. They may not love you, right? But the one thing they'll know, they'll say, well, you know what, whenever X, Y, and Z is, whenever that Vanessa is coming over to council for that labor issue, we know she's done her homework. That's, that, that is what Councilwoman Bass was trying to describe. Tell me that you're paying attention to the work I do and not just my physical appearance. But let me also say this and be real clear. I'm proud of being a woman. And wouldn't want it any other way, as tough, you know, a, as it is when people put you in the, what you can't do and you can't be. And I don't know about my colleagues, but I know I hear it all of the time. My son Langston is nine. I am a single mother, working very hard with his father to co-parent. You don't know how often I will hear people when discussing what the potential for my future will be to say, that is not something that she'll be able to do because she has a young son. And I do, and my head, my head spins. I say, well, wait a minute. Think about how many men have pursued other opportunities, run for higher office, you know, left government and went to the private sector. When they've had young children, did you ever ask how they, how they were going to make it and how they were going to get it done? They think about us being a single mom or just women, but we also have strong villages, and I don't do anything without mine.
Excellent. Absolutely. A village, a village is so important. You have to have that to help center you when you going through, somebody who you can talk to when, when you hear these ridiculous statements. And I know what you mean, because, and they do, they talk about your hair, your clothes, your makeup. Like, wait a minute, that's not, you're not doing that with the men. So how, really? And so, you know, that's why it's so important that, again, that we always have to be more than. It seems that we're never-
Can I interrupt for a minute? I know that it's not about our hair and our makeup, but all of you are very sharp women. Your makeup is perfect. And y'all look sharp all the time. So I know it's, that's not, but I just want to say that you do your work. You are impeccably qualified, but y'all are sharp.
Thank you so much, Jovita. I got, I owe you a lot of money tonight for the intro and then for that. Catherine, you're next to answer that question.
Yes. So I'll say, I remember my mentor always saying that we are walking on a tightrope backwards with high heels on, blindfolded, trying to get it right. And she would also say, you have to walk on water and fly to even be considered equal in this business. So you always show up as your best self with all the information necessary to show that you are studied and ready for the task ahead. And so that always stays with me. And I'll say this, some of the biggest challenges that I remember facing in 2019 was that, oh, she's too young. Yeah, she, she's worked in city government for a while, but yeah, she, she's a little too young. You know what? Actually, it's late in the process. It's already February. She's not going to be able to raise the money necessary to be successful. And you know what? I heard she has young kids. Yeah, you know she has young kids. And so all of those things came into the picture when really, you know, I was just as qualified, if not more qualified than most of the people who have been in the race, because I started in city government as an intern and a volunteer when I was 15 years old, working every single position as a staffer in city council, navigating city government to make it work for constituents day in and day out, and really giving my life to public service, not just at my day-to-day job, but also in my community. And working with Winfield Residents Association and in the 52nd ward, where I volunteered for 10 years before even being a committee person. And so those were all of the things that I heard was that no matter what, I wasn't good enough. So what we did, we doubled down on that in the campaign, and we said, moms, get the job done. That was my hashtag. And so if anybody could get the job done, it's moms, because we can do it all. We, we can take care of our families, we can go to work, we can still spend time with our families and be good colleagues to the people, and good servants to the people that we serve. So I say all that to say that there will always be naysayers. There will also always be impossibility thinkers, but we must know that we can get the job done. And apologies for the knocking. I'm still waiting on one more child to get home from school. We still getting it done.
That's right. Moms get the jobs done. Councilperson Brooks, you're next with that question.
Yes, my colleagues have kind of pulled it all together, like every piece of it. But I want to kind of backtrack one, Councilmember Gilmore Richardson's statement. I know when I was running for office, everyone told me it wasn't a chance in hell that you was going to win. Or who do you think you are? Like, you have the audacity to want to do something that's never been done. And to that, I felt like I was born with audacity. Nothing was ever given to me. Anything I ever wanted, I had to go for it, whether me being a single mom at 17, having my other child when I graduated from college, like walking down my graduation pregnant again, which was 10 years later, and then having my other children and still being proud, saying that I'm a single mom with four kids. All the things that they wanted to use to discount me, I use that to tell my own story. Because the story is a story of strength. I raised my four daughters by myself. I have two that are business owners, one's graduating from high school and one is in, in, in middle school now. And I'm very proud. And I, all the things that they try to make negate me and other women are the things that we have to use as our strength. Because the same people who say, oh, you was a single mom, your mother's probably a single mom. Of course, you can't say that, but like, single moms, moms, women, as Kathy said, get the job done. And all those things, I know they made me qualified. So I think when everyone tried to either discount, you know, my audacity to run or the lack of connections I had to politics, so to say, like traditional party politics, to me, you know, I used a power that I did was the connection that I had to people. The people in the community, like around education, around environmental justice, around police reform, what all those things, as well as just being, you know, a Black girl from Nice Town that, you know, hangs out. I still hang out. All the things that they told me you can't talk about, I talked about it. I did it. I went to those places. I still do, and they're like, you still come outside? Yes. And I think for me, I just had to push the envelope, because the first thing I said is, but my question to myself, if not me, then who? We can't allow the people to put us in a box. Black women aren't a monolith. And it's becoming all different styles, classes, and creeds. And we can't allow other people to tell us what we can't do and why we can't do both. And I think for me, like, that has been my strength to continue to push, you know, through all of this, you know, and kind of fall in love with this job that I didn't think I wanted in the beginning.
Thank you so much. So what I, what I hear is that, first of all, y'all have to have the audacity. I love that word. The audacity to run. And when you have that kind of attitude, then, you know, you, you definitely have to not allow others to tell you who you are, what you are, just because you're Black and I'm supposed to do this or whatever, just because you woman, you, you can't do whatever. So it is 6:48, so I'm going to my last question, which I hope y'all have some fun with. Now, each of you have gone against all odds to win your elected offices. And, you know, I heard the words also, too young, third party. What, what, what is a working party? Okay. Oh, she used to work for such and such. Okay. So with that in mind, which of the following quotes describe you and why? These are the quotes to choose from. If they don't give you a seat at the table, bring a folding chair. That's our own Shirley Chisholm. I'm not waiting for a seat at nobody's table. I am the table. Or this table wasn't made for me, so I'll throw it out and make my own table. So we're going to start with Sherrell.
I have, I have to say, Sister Shirley Chisholm. I mean, if they don't give you a seat at the table, bring a folding chair. And don't let anybody throw shade on your shine. You can do it. You can, you can make it. You have the skills, the talent, and the life experience to add value to any conversation. But if they don't give you a seat at the table, bring a folding chair. Because nine times out of 10, the people you want to represent, they need something that's at that table. So you just make sure you're there so that you can help deliver for them.
Yeah, it was someone, I think it might have been City Councilwoman Blondie Reynolds Brown, who I used to always hear say this. If you're not at the table, you're on the menu. Yeah, and we don't want to be on the menu. Catherine Gilmore Richardson, you're next with that question.
So you, you took the words out of my mouth. Okay. I'm going to go with, obviously, the quote from my mentor. If you're not at the table, you're on the menu. And that mean the issues you care about is on that menu as well. And so I have to go with that one. And if I had to pick one, just, I would say my spirit animal is I am the table. Because not in our lifetime have we seen always the table work for us. And so I think now we have to work towards building a new table that's built differently around the issues that our community cares about and that is most important to them, so that we can bring the issues, you know, to the top of that table that really matter. So I would have to say, I am the table. I'll go with the second quote.
I like that one too. I, I actually have a T-shirt with that one. Councilmember Brooks, you're next.
So although I like all the quotes, I think I'm going to go with the one that people probably expect me to, that I'm just throwing the table to the side and creating a whole new one. It kind of goes with my third-party run. But, you know, some people are going to be there to help us build this table anew. Because as Kathy mentioned, some of these tables weren't even built for us. Like, even if we sit there, we're just there. So, yeah, I think I'm going to be a disruptor. I mean, that's who I am.
Absolutely, absolutely. You are disruptors in your own right. Trust me, you all are, which is a good thing, not a bad thing. And Councilwoman Bass, we're going to let you close it out with the answer in that one.
Well, with all due respect to the table, throw the table out and start over. The table hasn't worked for us. I feel like the table just, you know, it's a nice table for some, but for others, we haven't been welcomed at this table. I think it's always okay to start over with a new table.
Absolutely. I just want to thank each of you. You know, I, I know all of you, I've, I've respected you from afar. You all have done impactful work in your positions, every last one of you. And I just want to say, thank you, girls. Thank you, ladies. So Jovita, it's back to you.
Jovita, can I just say something really quick, and I apologize for cutting you off. But I just want to give the extra special thank you to Vanessa Fields, who is a history maker in her own right, doing wonderful work. And I just had to take the point of personal privilege as a fellow 52nd ward committee person, Winfield neighbor, fellow now member, just to say thank you to Ms. Vanessa Fields for all the work that she continues to do. Because she doesn't have to do this, but she continues to do the work to help us move forward. So thank you very, very, very much.
And I'd like to join you in saying thank you to Vanessa. What a wonderful moderating job you did tonight. And I also want to thank all of our council members who were here tonight. Your insight has been valuable. And so I am like, I cannot tell you how excited I am. And I feel elated about how this evening went. Thank you all very, very much. I appreciate what you do and all you do, not just for me, but for our city and for women. And I am very proud of all of you and the work you do. And so I also would like to thank Sapashy Dut, who is our digital coordinator and communications director for the Office of Public Engagement. He has made all of- He has made all of our events for Women's History Month possible. If not for Sapashy and Vanessa, I wouldn't be worth a plug nickel. And so I am very grateful. And so I would also like to give you what the schedule is going to be for the rest of the month. Next week, as a follow-up tonight, next week, it'll be, so you want to run for public office? Here's how. And then on Saturday, especially a focus on youth, it's build your brand and they will come, how your personal story can build a movement. And March twenty-second, it's Shattering the Glass Ceiling, Women and Campaign Management. And that one is very special to me because when I met Catherine, and maybe, I don't know, Catherine was about fifteen years ago or something like that. We were in weekend training. And I was interested in taking that training, not because I was interested in running for public office, but I had spent the better part of my adult life volunteering on campaigns. And I noticed that all of the people who were getting paid were men and all of the women were volunteers. Well, this is focusing on changing that narrative about women and campaign management. So I'm really excited about that one. And that'll be on March twenty-second. On March twenty-sixth, your vote, how to build your block and how to inspire civic participation in others. And on March twenty-ninth, it'll be mobilizing the Latino vote. And finally, at the end of the month, on March thirty-first, it will be Resistance: How Women Save Democracy. There is a link in the chat where you can register for any or all of these events. And thank you very much for all of you who have joined us tonight. Have a good evening.